Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
No.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Um, motion, motion, pass.
Thank you.
Item number ten, resolution approving liquor license for Family Dollar Store, number two, three, eight, seven, seven, located at sixteen oh one East Napoleon Street, resolution six, eight, two, two, Mayor Danahay. Need a motion and a second?
So move, second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Item number eleven is a resolution appointing a member to the Land Use Commission for District Two, resolution sixty-nine, twenty-two, Nick Nezat. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Nick?
Uh, Troy Darby.
Is he here?
No, Mr. Darby wasn't able to make it today.
Anything you want to tell us about him?
No, and, and, and again, um, I know Mr. Meisuch is in the audience, uh, would like to, you know, if, if this resolution gets, uh, you know, approved, um, I'd like to thank him for his service, uh, you know, this isn't anything that was personal by any means. Uh, unfortunately, he got the unfortunate circumstance that, to no fault of his own. Um, but, uh, you know, I just would like to thank him and commend him for his service, uh, in the meantime, if this does pass. Um, but I, I do feel that Troy will do a good job.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item number eleven A, a resolution approving liquor license for Cameron Cluci Mexican Grill LLC, located at five oh four North Bagless Parkway. Resolution seventy, twenty-two, Mayor Danahay. Need a motion and a second?
So move, second.
Would anyone like to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item eleven B, introduction of ordinance amending the general fund budget for fiscal year. Introduction of ordinance amending the general fund budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-two, Mayor Danahay. Need a motion and a second?
So move, second.
We learned as of recent that we have the ability, um, to come to the council and ask for amendment on a budget, um, that is closed for a year that has not yet been audited. So, we come before you today asking to, asking to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, um, in order to allow for invoices that came in, in July, that were in the twenty-one, twenty-two year. The invoices were for professional services in relation to hurricane recovery. So, we're under contract, um, you know, for these services. We just didn't expect for them to come in, in July, after we just amended the budget for them in June.
Ms. Thorne, would you, for the sake of clarity to, uh, the audience, you said we learned. Would you give them the source of the, the verification?
Sure, um, so our city controller, um, she is taking her certifications now for, um, Louisiana governmental financial certificates. Um, and she went to Lake Charles last week where, um, Ms. Harold, who is the retired finance director from the city of Lake Charles, was proctoring her test. And Karen had asked how we're doing, how our financial statement is doing. And, um, Ms. Gibbs, our city controller, had explained, you know, we had some expenses come in at the end of the year that we're gonna have to accrue for, um, government finance, uh, requirements that, um, would cause us to have a finding in our audit this year. Just as we had last year, same circumstances. Um, and, and Ms. Harold had explained that we could actually live in the budget. So, when Ms. Gibbs came back and talked to me about it, I got on the phone with the Legislative Auditor's Office. I spoke to legal counsel there. Um, they also, um, confirmed that with good reason, this is something we can do. And then we so happened to have our, um, engaged auditor in-house today, getting started on prep work for our annual audit. And we talked to him about it, and he agreed as well. So, we have to deal with this situation either now, or we're gonna deal with it when our audit comes out.
Well, if it'll eliminate the possibility of a finding, obviously, we wanna take that proactive stance. Especially that you got legal, uh, advice that it is, um, legal to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harold is gonna be teaching these classes, right? Did I hear that, or no? She's a pro.
Is she gonna be teaching them? I mean, she's part of the, uh, Governmental Financial Officers Association in the state of Louisiana. Um, she's very highly decorated. Um, you know, she, she was with Lake Charles for over thirty years. Um, you know, she's who, my go-to for sure for the first two years that I was with the city. Um, and she just recently retired this last year, but she's still very much so a part of the GFPA, um, which, um, me and the city controller are part of as well.
Anyone have any other questions? Uh, we, we had a motion and a second. Um, did anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Item eleven C, introduction of ordinance amending the general fund budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Ordinance ninety-four, twenty-two. Mayor Danahay, I need a motion and a second?
So move.
Sorry, guys.
So, since you were amending the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, the ending fund balance will change for the current year? So, we've got to amend the budget so that we can change the beginning fund balance.
I, I'd like to thank you for being proactive in, uh, taking the information from Louisiana to you and doing further research to, to make our city better and to keep us informed. Thank you very much.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item eleven D, introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign agreement with Salford Housing Authority for sanitaries to relift station replacement project, ordinance ninety-five, twenty-two. I need a motion and a second?
So move, second.
Mayor Danahay, anything you wanna add?
Actually, uh, I was very friendly, I was. Uh, so this is just for property acquisition that, uh, honestly, I dropped the ball, I should've already taken care of it, but, um, yeah, so this is just for property acquisition for the project, or, I don't understand. So, for all the forty.
All right, I had a motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Number twelve is rule show cause for the condition of the following addresses. We have, item A was removed, so we have item B to condemn building or structure located at three hundred Landry Street in accordance with Article, um, Nick Nezat. Is anyone here from three hundred Landry Street?
Right here.
You wanna go ahead and get up and?
Hello, Kathleen Jodno. My address is fourteen eleven West Kent Drive. But I do own the property at three hundred Landry Street. And I'm here to ask for just a little bit more time before the building is going to be disma- uh, demolished. But, I have, uh, things in there that.
Ms. Jagman, how long have we been waiting now? And what, when did we start the process? Do you have that, Denise? We signed for the first letter on the nineteenth.
Yes.
Okay, so, do you have a plan of getting it out, the stuff in?
That's why I'm here. If I can have more time.
But, so you've already had four months. It would, I mean, they started the process of telling you this needed to be done. And so, how much more time would you need?
Um, because of my health and being able to get help. Uh, and then I do have to have a procedure on the twenty-third. Uh, if I can have, so this, at least a couple of weeks after that. My grandson was deployed, and he'll be back, uh, first of all.
Ms. Jagman, have you made, um, any effort at all?
Yes, and then.
Can you tell me what you've done?
I personally, I can't even get into the house.
Right.
By myself.
It, it's in pretty bad shape.
It is in terrible shape. But I just had a few things I'd like to get out. That.
Do you have, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Do you have, I mean, is it safe to go in there, in the house, to get the stuff out?
Yeah.
If it's in terrible shape?
It's just that, uh, to repair it would be, you know, there, it, that would be better off with it down and trying to rebuild it a little bit.
I'm retarded, I'll help. Y'all give us some more time?
Thank Christ, Lord.
And I will, uh, I got trailers and stuff, and we'll, uh, I'll get some people together, we'll put it where machine needs it. If y'all give it time, you gotta have a place to put it.
I, I don't, I don't live in it.
Don't mind it, if you gotta, you gotta, I just put the stuff that's there, they want it out of there, I'll help. We got, we got people to help you. Just make sure she's got a place to put it, so we can take it somewhere. Not in my house.
Ms. Jagman, did you have a place where you could put it? That if you pulled that stuff out for you, where you would have to, where it to go to?
Yes. I mean, I don't want everything out of it, it's just things that mean.
Right, I won't move it.
Could I have a little bit more time, so I can get this?
You, you said you had a procedure coming up? When, what day was the procedure?
Twenty-third.
Of this month.
And your, and your grandson's gonna be in first of October? Like, what if we go to the end of October?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
November first.
November first, um.
Anybody have work for you?
You just said personal items?
Don't put me on that. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, and so, it takes much to make a motion, please.
You'd need to move to give, you know, November first. Because the normal is thirty days. And then, after that amendment is made, then you go on the overall counting.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll move the motion to give it to November first.
Right. And, anyone wish to speak on that item? Roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item C is to condemn building or structure located at seven oh one Philip Street. Will you move this amendment, Hardy? Does anyone?
Yeah.
Anyone here from seven oh one? Philip Street? Please speak on this item.
Um, no one has, uh, responded to the correspondence from the city. No one has contacted me. I support the city's decision.
And was anyone from the public here to speak on that item? Roll call, please. You had a motion and a second?
Yeah, uh, no, I did not, I'm sorry.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender? Yes.
Item D is to condemn building or structure located at seven oh five North Stanford Street. Ms. Joy Ellender?
So move. Second.
Is there anybody here for that?
This is air property. My dad died in two thousand nine, and we're just now starting this secession. I started it back in April of this year.
Thirteen years?
Yeah. My little brother was living there all this time.
Oh.
So, he died last year. So, then we had to get it all cleaned up, because he was kind of a hoarder, and it was nasty. So, I had to thank y'all, by the way, because there's no way I could've done that by myself. Uh, but since then, I have been going once a week to maintain, cut the grass. I put a new lock on it. We're just starting to do repairs around the windows and stuff. And I plan on putting some skirting around on them. So, my plan is, once the secession is all done, I want to try to sell this property to pay for the secession.
Okay, Denise, have, is it secure? Did y'all, not all, um, so it needs to be secure?
What does that mean?
It means that it's, it, nobody can break into, well, you know.
Right, and then I put a new, uh, house with a, for like, big lock on it, padlock on it, just last weekend.
Like, are there any broken windows and things like that, or?
There's one in the front where that board was, but it was in the very corner of the window. And it's on an inside window, it's, there's one, another one on the outside. So, I put another piece of glass over that, and took the board down, because it was ugly. But all the windows are closed with wood across the top, but I'm gonna go in and put screws or nails in the top, so they can't be open. And there, that's the only access, is the door there, just with the lock on.
And you're working on it every week, you say?
Every week, yes.
Or you just setting up the yard every week?
I just started working on the trailer last week.
Okay, so, if we give you, like, forty-five more days, or?
I, I don't know how that.
Can you get it a lot better than it is?
I, I can, yeah, I'm, yeah, well, yes. We're gonna work on it and get, everything needs to be fixed. I'm gonna fix it cosmetically, as, to the best of my knowledge. I'm the only one around to work on this. And I drive from Gillis once a week to go and take care of it, so.
I got a problem with that, I help you cut grass sometimes.
I didn't hear that.
I said, I help you cut grass sometimes.
Oh, you will?
I did.
Oh, you did? That was you across the street! I knew I'd seen you before. Thank you.
Okay, that's my, I guess, okay, that's.
So, I'll, I'll do the best I can to.
Let me, let me get a clarification, because you changed it to forty-five days, it could still be that it has to be demolished at the end, or you want to condemn it, or you want to us reschedule this condemnation hearing for, in two months?
Let's revisit it in two.
I can't afford to demolish it.
It would be to postpone.
It can't be moved.
It would be to postpone the condemnation hearing until the meeting November, I guess it'd be November fourteen?
Is that our next meeting?
Well, just put the regular schedule.
Okay.
Do I have a second? So, forty-five days to continue to make improvements?
And then we'll look at.
Come back here.
In forty-five?
November.
Okay.
Shelley's gonna be walking around and checking it?
Okay.
And she'll, she'll be watching it to see what improvements are being done, and then you'll come back here.
And ma'am, so you understand, if you've not secured it and made enough progress to the satisfaction that it no longer needs to be condemned, if they decide to condemn it in November, you would have thirty days to demolish it, or the city would put, would demolish it and put liens against the property. So, if you want the property, you gotta get it in shape and get it properly secured.
Okay, I'll do my best. I mean, I'll, I'll do what I can do. The inside is, is in bad shape, but, I would worry about ingress, getting into the house, then I can fix that. I mean, I don't know how secure I can make it, 'cause they'll cut any chain, or they cut any law, if they wanna get in, they're gonna get in.
Well, it's, it's more like, there's no broken windows, so everybody can just be in and out. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, you know.
Yeah.
There's two, there's two components to condemnation. One component is the security and it being a public nuisance for vagrants and things like that. The other component, if it's, if it's more, more than fifty percent damage to where it's not livable, that's also a basis. So, she needs to be making progress on securing it and improving its condition.
Got it.
Yeah, I would do it. Once a week, that's all I can do.
So, we had a motion and a second, roll call, please, Arlene.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
And you'll send me a letter, and we'll have that win. I'm supposed to come back? We'll get a notice, okay. Thank you.
We'll get a notice.
Let me just tell her she get a letter.
Yeah, Shelley's, okay.
All right, item E to get them building or structure located at sixteen oh nine Laramo Drive, Ms. Joy Abshar?
Um, these homeowners have some medical, uh, serious medical concerns right now. And in visiting with them, there's been the following, uh, conditions, uh, based upon a possible sixty-day extension, um, that, uh, with a possible review in ninety days, provided the following requirements have been met. Uh, they've indicated that they want to, uh, sell the home, and that there's some people interested in the home. As you can tell, it's in pretty rough shape. But, uh, they, I, I'm gonna recommend that we allow them to have sixty days, provided that, that within thirty days, sixty days, and with a possible extension to ninety days, provided that within thirty days, they've met the, uh, they've met the three requirements. That they submit a, a name of a possible listing realtor that they will use, that there's a realtor sign in the front yard for sale, that a water bill that is in arrears is taken care of. If they choose not to do any of those items, then in that same time period, they have to provide the city with a valid, uh, definitive, um, term to that property, uh, or a buy-sell agreement. If they can do that, and, and they need that extension for the ninety days to, uh, sell the property, then the city's willing to work with them. If not, then the city is gonna, uh, demo the property, no exceptions. I was sitting here reading my notes, so, uh, we talked to, uh, Elance today about it, and I've visited, uh, with the city permit office, and we feel like based upon their current conditions right now, health conditions, that, um, you know, their intentions are that they wanna get rid of the property. But, as you can see, there's not much that's happened there, so we wanna hold it tight as to what we will or will not allow for. And I'd ask for y'all to consider it.
That's your motion?
So, I make a motion. Based on this, I'm just.
Arlene, you got that, second?
I can give you all the notes on it, Arlene.
It's the condemning it, but to amend the time to demolish.
Right.
To be sixty days, subject to the stipulations provided.
Correct.
We had a motion and a second?
Where are you?
All right, roll call, please.
Um, uh, that was to?
Oh, wait, did anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank y'all.
The next item on the agenda is the public comments section. We do ask that you try your best, if you're down to three minutes, um, I have Ms. Cindy Roberts. Roberts, Cindy?
Yeah, my handwriting is really bad.
Well, I, I know your name, I'm bad about that, I don't finish saying the whole thing.
Um, I'm gonna set this right here real quick, and it's, okay, if I can get all these things, I was. And it's a perfect seg- Cindy Roberts, seven sixty, four West Firdine. It's a perfect segue after the, um, the, uh, what did you ever you doing there? Oh, I forget, I'm, I'm losing my words. Okay, what you're looking at is, um, recommendations from the disaster justice, well, they're not from the Disaster Justice Network, they're about fortified building, and if you look at the one that has a picture on it, it shows what happened to that, that, there, it's, uh, down south with Ida. And it's in the, uh, it's called the Greenhouse, with the Indian tribes' greenhouse. And they have, it ha- they had four screens blow off of it. And that's all that happened, because they used these building techniques. So, Dequincy has put one of those, uh, displays in their, um, building permit, wherever you go to get the building permit. And we will keep it filled up, and the idea is that people will, if they use these resilient rebuilding techniques, that we won't have as much damage in our city, people will be able to get moved back in quickly. Businesses will have employees ready to go, um, and it will be a lot less damage in our community if we start using these. Not asking for an ordinance, not asking for change in building codes. Just give people who are getting building permits this information, so if they have, you know, if a contractor comes in, they'll be able to put the right kind of seam, you know, seam tape and all the different things. Um, just something as simple as, instead of putting your sheetrock straight up, you put it sideways, and put a wainscote in between it. Then if you flood, it just goes up a certain, um, you know, it just goes up in that four foot. You don't have to gut your whole house. I mean, that's huge, after we had those floods that came through. And then, you know, what I've started doing is I'm putting all my electrical above that four foot. Not, not that I'm ever going to be flooded over there on Firdine Street, 'cause I'm up. But, um, just in case, you never know what happens. So, this gives people some information to make sure that their contractors do things that will make their homes secure in the next hurricane, God forbid.
Thank you.
Thanks for that information. Jared Walker? Ms. Amy Felice?
Uh, Amy Felice, twenty-three, twenty-nine, Augusteen. Uh, today is my daughter's fifteenth birthday, and I'm sure she's disappointed I'm not home celebrating with her. But I felt it was important for me to come out again and ask for your consideration to film the meetings. And I'm hopeful by my next daughter's birthday in November, maybe we'll have a contract with a videographer, so myself and the rest of the public can watch at our leisure.
Thank you. Hey, you're all happy birthday, and I'm sorry.
Mr. Bucky LaBuck?
Excuse me. Well, I shared with you about seven months ago, maybe, my, I'm Bucky LaBuck, and I'm at eleven thirty-four, Key Stu's and River Road in Salford. My own outskirts of the city, about, about two blocks, maybe. That's just a joke. Anyway, seven months ago, I've. Anyway, seven months ago, I coached the city in the chamber where the meetings used to take place and shared with you guys about, you know, some of the problems that have been going on, especially, and I know it's all over the city, but especially north of the railroad track. And I'm not gonna say that that's gotten any better. But it seems like it hasn't gotten any worse. But just to enlighten the council that, you know, on the twenty-sixth of August, we fed about a hundred ninety-three families, which was homeless. Or the ones that qualified. I'm not gonna say all homeless because I'm not really sure if they were all homeless, but that qualified. And so, and I think it was done in this parking lot, if I'm not mistaken. We were, that really helped a bunch in that organization. But, you know, there were so many things on the agenda I really wanted to talk about. But the real thing I wanna talk about is our police officers. And, you know, I don't know the answer because I don't sit on the budget and haven't been involved in the committee since nineteen eighty-four, so I've kinda lost track through the years. But, you know, these guys put their life on the line twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And they probably make barely over minimum wage on an average. And you say, "Bucky, why do you say that?" I just use a math number in my own little brain. And so, you know, in the future, and I don't know, I know the mayor deliberately will work with this thing, but we need to come up with a better idea. Okay, to pay these folks a fair wage for the job that they take on. You know, we're always, you know, quick to respond, you know, when they don't do their job and the guy's in the room. They're taking all the way to speed and I was probably going twenty miles over the speed limit, okay? But, you know, that's just how we are in nature. But the bottom line is that, is all the children that we have and grandchildren, not counting ourselves and a lot of the elderly off that track like there is in this entire city. These guys need help. And however we approach this help, we need to either dig deep in this budget or find a way that, and I'm not talking about more taxes. There's gotta be a way that we can dig in this budget and find a way to pay these guys. I mean, when I watch an ad on KPLC, which is pretty much the only news besides maybe Fox here there and yonder. But, you know, what they pay for one of these guys to sign on bonus? Nine grand, that's been another bad day, you know? Now, and I'm saying this, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I asked, instead of talking about mobile homes, which I have, you know, way more involved in than I do, these guys here have put their life on the line every day and first responders as well. And I'm not leaving those guys out. But, you know, hopefully, we can look forward to doing something that we can help these families and these guys to make a decent living, to do what we ask them to do every day. Thank y'all very kindly.
Thank you.
Well, direct and sound saying nothing. I haven't recorded.
No one else signed up to speak? So that ends the public comment section of the...
Mandy, I'd like to commend you for your strong leadership regarding the charter. And we look forward to your leadership in that regards. And we're gonna work hard collectively to be supportive of you in that.
Do you think we can all agree?
Ditto.
Matter of fact, real quick, we've had a lot of questions, people, I say a lot, quite a few calls about Halloween. Halloween will be October thirty-first. Halloween, okay? So that's when we'll be celebrating the city's Salford, October thirty-first. Thank you.
Gilmore Acres is wide open.
I'm here with Gilmore Acres every year Halloween. I wanna rent a house. That's it? Next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October eleventh at five thirty, same location.
I just didn't need it. I was gonna give you my number, but if you wasn't happy, I was gonna help you. I'll put my number in your phone. I don't mind helping you.